Morning, I will now call the May quarterly meeting of the Board of Trustees of Illinois State University to order. We welcome those of you who will be participating in today's meeting via Zoom and request that you mute yourself until it is appropriate for you to speak. We also welcome those of you who are watching this meeting on YouTube. For the record, I will note that we are holding this meeting by means of a Zoom in compliance with executive order in response to COVID-19, number five, section six, which states, during the duration of the gubernatorial disaster proclamation, the provisions of the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120 requiring or relating to in-person attendance by members of a public body are suspended. Specifically, one, the requirement in 5 ILCS 120/2.01 that members of a public body must be physically present is suspended. And two, the conditions in 5 ILCS 120/7 limiting when remote participation is permitted is suspended. I note for the record that the agenda for this meeting was posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. The posting included directions on how to access the meeting. Trustee Lauterback, will you call the role?
Yes, I will. Trustee Bone?
Present.
Trustee Dobski?
Present.
Trustee Donahue?
Present.
Trustee Jones?
Present.
Trustee Lauterback, present. Trustee Navarro?
Present.
Trustee Rossmark?
Here.
Trustee Aguilar? Chairperson Jones, we have a forum.
Thank you, Trustee Lauterback. You have before you the agenda for today's meeting. May I please have a motion and a second to approve the agenda? Second. Uh, when you make, just because of, for the sake of the Zoom, if you, when you make a motion or a second, can you please state your name? For the record. So we have a motion, let's see. Sarah made the motion and a second by Bob Navarro. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. You also have before you the minutes of the March 28th, 2020 Board of Trustees Meeting, the February 21st quarterly meeting of the board, and the February 1st meeting of the board. I will need a motion for each of these sets of minutes. May I have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes of the May 28th, 2020 meeting?
So move.
Second by Bone.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Lauterback and a second by Trustee Bone. Those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The meet, the minutes of the May 28th, 2020 meeting are approved. May I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the February 21st, 2020 meeting?
Uh, Trustee Jones, may I interject that, uh, I think you said May 28th, it's really March 28th?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you so much. We, you know, we're in the coronavirus zone, so I'm sorry, every, uh, time is relative these days, but thank you.
I amend my mo- motion.
That is March 28th. For, for clarity of the record, thank you, thank you, Dr. Dietz.
Sure.
Um, may I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the February 21st, 2020 meeting?
So move, this is Bone.
Yeah, second, Bob Dobski.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Bone and a second by Trustee Dobski. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes of February 21st, 2020 meeting are approved. May I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the February 1st, 2020 meeting?
So move, Rossmark.
Second, Sarah.
I have a motion on the floor by Trustee Rossmark and a second by Trustee Aguilar. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the minutes of February 1st, 2020 meeting are approved. Next on the agenda is public comment. In accordance with the policy of the, the Board of Trustees, we'll allow up to 30 minutes in total for public comments and questions during a public meeting. An individual speaker is permitted five minutes for his or her presentation. If more than two persons wish to speak on a single item, it is recommended they choose one or more to speak for them. The Board of Trustees will accept copies of speaker presentations, questions, and other relevant written materials. When appropriate, the Board of Trustees will provide a writ, uh, will provide a response to the speaker's questions within a reasonable amount of time. Is there anyone that wishes to make public comment? Seeing that no one has indicated an interest in making public comment today, we will move forward with the meeting. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the May 2020 quarterly meeting of the Board of Trustees. I want to begin by issuing my congratulations to all of our May graduates. We understand that your last semester here has been anything but normal. We appreciate your perseverance in completing your final semester under such challenging circumstances. Like you, we missed the opportunity to participate in commencement ceremonies on this day. If you were able to do so, please take the opportunity to participate in the December commencement ceremonies. We wish you the very best in your future endeavors. President Dietz has kept the trustees apprised of actions the university has taken in response to COVID-19. These are extraordinary times, and we appreciate his leadership of the university. A strong leader has allowed our university to continue to thrive in spite of these difficult circumstances. We also want to express our thanks to the faculty and staff for quickly transitioning from in-person classes to online classes, allowing students to complete the semester. We know it has been difficult for everyone, and we greatly appreciate all of the efforts. I will now turn to President Dietz for his remarks.
Thank you very much, uh, Trustee Chair Jones, I appreciate the, the accolades that you just threw my way, but I would be, uh, certainly remiss if I didn't share those with, uh, a team of people who have worked very, very hard. This is one of the largest teams of folks around any particular issue that I've ever been involved with in my career in higher education. And let me just assure you that everybody is working diligently on this. Uh, we put in many, many hours, uh, already, we have many hours to go, a lot more to do, but it's, uh, just really gratifying to know that everybody is really chipping in and, and, and helping out. So appreciate your comments, but I share those with, uh, all the, uh, all the team that's, uh, that's helping out with this COVID-19 uh, virus. And our, and the university's response to that. Uh, I begin my remarks today with some congratulations and also some thank yous. First, I want to extend my heartfelt congratulations to, uh, Trustee Sarah Aguilar for, uh, graduating today and completing her term as a student trustee. Uh, she will be entering graduate school in the fall at Florida State University. She had many, many offers. And, um, Flor- Florida State is the one that's going to be, uh, uh, the recipient of her talent. And so we're delighted, uh, for her there, that program, uh, I know, uh, many of, uh, I know LJ knows the program and student personnel and higher education, uh, there as well. It's a national leader in that field, and so, uh, Sarah, very proud of you. Uh, you've been one of the most engaged student trustees with whom I have, uh, worked in this capacity, and your dedication and hard work, uh, will always be appreciated. Uh, also want to say, uh, a big thank you to Samia Salabo, uh, who recently completed her term as student body president. Uh, Samia, I appreciate all that you have done on behalf of the students and for Illinois State University. It's been a real professional and personal privilege to be able to work with you. And, uh, she is continuing her, uh, academic career here, so I look forward to uh, seeing her on campus and continue to work with her in whatever capacity that she ends up, uh, ends up in. Uh, she has also served during one of the most challenging years for the university. And I appreciate, I've always appreciated her, uh, hard work, her candor and willingness to take on difficult issues. Uh, we would normally introduce the new student body president and student trustee at this meeting, but given the circumstances, we decided to wait until, uh, the July meeting. And where hopefully we will be able to, uh, make introductions in person. It might be an optimistic view, but nevertheless, uh, that's what we're striving for. And at that point, we will also introduce our new provost, Dr. Andover Turhule, who, uh, begins his term on, uh, uh, July 1st of, uh, 2020. Uh, this will also be, uh, potentially the last Board of Trustees meeting for, uh, two colleagues that have served admirably for the university. Dean Sherry Zek has been the interim dean of the libraries and has served, uh, Milner Library and that, uh, that program very, very well. Before that, she had a distinguished career in the College of Fine Arts. And Sherry, uh, we wish you well in your, uh, retirement and appreciate very much the contributions that you've made to the university. Also, um, Provost Murphy will be, uh, retiring at the end of June. And, uh, she has a 34-year career at the university. And I've, uh, been fortunate to, uh, be able to work with her over the course of the last, uh, several years in the provost role. And, uh, she's served in many other roles, uh, dean, she's been in the provost office, uh, different times. She's been, uh, the head of dining at one time and her, uh, uh, career and, uh, and, uh, the, the whole food science area is, is really a distinguished career. And, and, uh, Jan, appreciate all the contribu- contributions that you've made and wish you well in, in retirement as well. So, um, also, uh, globally, want to extend my congratulations to the May 2020 graduates of the university. Uh, there are 3,601 candidates for bachelor's degrees and 726 for graduate degrees, uh, being awarded. Uh, last week, the graduates received their diploma covers, commencement programs, commencement tassel, and alumni association keychain. Uh, just as with the traditional spring commencement, uh, there are separate virtual ceremonies for the six colleges. A student from each college provides remarks at their respective ceremony. And student trustee Sarah Aguilar speaks on behalf of all students. I invited graduates, uh, earlier this, uh, semester, uh, to submit stories of how they have coped with the coronavirus pandemic and what they have learned from that. And, uh, we didn't know, uh, how this was going to go. Obviously, we've never, never had this, uh, experience before. Uh, didn't know if anybody was going to respond, but, uh, happily, more than 200 people, uh, graduates responded to my, my invitation. I incorporated a few of the stories in my commencement remarks and selected about three students uh, from each college and used the graduates of each of those specific colleges, uh, to customize remarks to their college. The students wrote of helping people in their neighborhoods, learning patience, gaining an appreciation of little things, and missing friends and classmates. All of them were heartfelt, and despite the challenges, they, uh, were all upbeat with an overriding theme of resilience. Uh, the stories are being given to the university archives and Milner Library to be compiled in a booklet so that we can capture the moment for future generations. On a different note and a, another positive note, though, the state of Illinois has released approximately $12.4 million to the university last week in the monetary award program funding. We have now received the entire balance due on MAP funding for the spring 2020 term. In total, the university received $25.5 million for MAP funding and FY 2020, which was applied to the accounts of qualified students to assist with their educational expenses. I, uh, met yesterday with a, uh, higher education working group subcommittee, uh, dealing with a capital budget. And we were asked about our, our progress of both in operating and in capital. And obviously, we've not received any funding on, on capital at this point, uh, for the current year. But in terms of operating, I, I reported that we've received, uh, about 60% of our funding, about 40% obviously to go. We've been told that, uh, hopefully we'll receive all of our operating funds by June 30, though the payments may be, uh, delayed a little beyond normal. Uh, we do anticipate receiving the full amount, though. Also, last week, the university received $8 million through the CARES Act to award emergency grants to students. These funds are designed to, uh, assist students with expenses related to the disruption of campus operations due to the coronavirus pandemic. International students, undocumented students, and the DACA or Deferred Action for Childhood Arrival students are not eligible for this federal student aid program. The Financial Aid Office sent a message to all students explaining the availability of the funds and the process to apply for the funds. Student emergency grant funds of up to $500 are available to students experiencing a COVID-19-related financial hardship. Students with extraordinary circumstances may appeal for more than $500 by providing additional information on the application. And the Financial Aid Office will review applications in the order received and determine each student's eligibility. A priority will be given to students who demonstrate a financial need. The law also allows for funding to be set aside for FY 2021, which we plan to do to help offset some 2020, uh, 2021 academic, uh, year expenses for students. These funds are in addition to the $0.5 million of university funds that have been distributed to students since March to assist with financial emergencies related to the COVID-19, uh, pandemic. And also the, uh, $19.4 million in refunds issued to students for the spring semester. That's the room and board and, and as well as, uh, fee refunds that, that went out. In April, the university launched the, uh, Redbird Response Fund to raise additional funds to help students to deal with job loss, homelessness, and our food insecurity as a result of the pandemic. Uh, very appreciative to, uh, Vice President Vickerman and his team for putting that in place in a very short period of time. Earlier this week, the university participated in a global effort called Giving Tuesday Now. The donations collected were directed to the Redbird, uh, Response Fund. We have a goal of raising $100,000 for the, for the fund, and we're well on our way with more than $72,000 donated so far. On another positive note, Redbird's rising, the campaign for Illinois State now exceeds $176 million. We are fortunate to have, have exceeded our $150 million goal before COVID-19 changed the world. Almost all of the funds raised during the campaign are designated for specific purposes. The $0.5 million given to students to help students who need the semester is an example of gifts to the Red and White Scholarship designated to help students with emergency needs. Another example is the Wonsuk Kim and Thomas Clement gift to vent benefit specific programs in the Wonsuk Kim College of Fine Arts. The amount of funds, uh, again, given to the university, however, uh, that are unrestricted is very, very small. So most of the dollars that we receive are targeted toward a different, uh, and very specific need, but we're grateful for all the contributions. Regarding a return to normal operations, we're being asked that a lot, you know, when do we get back to, uh, normal operations? And, uh, many are wondering that. I wish I knew that. Uh, obviously, I don't. But on Tuesday, the governor released the Restore Illinois Plan, which identifies criteria and regions of the state for return to work. Several university working groups are looking beyond May, planning, uh, back-to-campus scenarios that begin as early as, uh, June the 1st, uh, assuming that this region meets the criteria. Undoubtedly, there will be new procedures and precautions focused on the health and safety of our work environments. And not everyone will return to work on June the 1st. The return to work on campus will, will occur gradually and over the summer. When plans become, uh, more concrete, uh, I will communicate them, uh, to the university community and to, to all of you. Uh, the bottom line, we have about 16 different working groups, uh, that are working on different aspects of, uh, the COVID-19 pandemic and the university's response to that. And, uh, several of them are in- involved with this return-to-work status. Our careful planning and the coming weeks will ensure that we are prepared for a healthy and safe return to our new normal in the fall, however defined. That return will arrive with, uh, numerous precautions and guidelines to protect our campus, uh, communities' health and safety, while also complying with all national, state, and local, uh, health and safety directions. We expect students will return to, uh, residence halls, uh, albeit, uh, there may be fewer of them doing that. Uh, eat in the dining centers with precautions there. Uh, I expect we will have a lot of masks available on the, on the campus. Uh, we hope to have face-to-face instruction, uh, in classes, though, uh, albeit, uh, probably an increase in the, uh, normal number of online, uh, classes. And we hope that students can participate in modified campus activities. Obviously, the summer's a critical time for that, and I think, uh, July is going to be a very critical month. Our planning is al- is also exploring alternative scenarios for the fall should a return to face-to-face, uh, classes and living on campus not be feasible. We want to be as prepared as possible, no matter what the coronavirus throws at us. In closing my remarks, I want to, uh, thank the faculty, staff, and students for making incredible adjustments in a very short timeframe, which allowed students can, to complete this semester and to those who went above and beyond to help students in need. We know that there are many, uh, faculty, staff, and students who are hurting financially and emotionally. We appreciate all that you've done to make this semester successful despite all the obstacles. I also want to thank the board for your support during these trying times. Your support means a great deal to everyone at the university, including the executive leadership team and me. I would now like to call the spokesperson for the Campus Communications Committee, uh, Beth Theobald, uh, for a report. Beth?
Good morning.
Morning.
As the Campus Communication Committee members, we're thinking about writing this letter. We were concerned there were no words to express the true feelings and emotions I am sure we are all experiencing right now. These unprecedented times have changed the landscape of the future for each and every one of us in many different ways. Our campus is empty, our facilities are closed. ISU has moved in-person instruction to a virtual learning environment, and every individual is working to adapt to the new and continuously changing situations in their work, school, and home life. Though change is never easy, it does have a way of showing you the vitality, resilience, and strength our campus has continued to show through this pandemic. There are so many individuals who have worked tirelessly, needing each and every day to ensure the safety of our faculty, staff, and students. President Dietz, the Cabinet, the Emergency Operations Center, our deans, chairs, faculty, and staff from across campus have been working around the clock with little break or rest to lead us through to the other side without knowing when that other side might appear. These leaders are now working on many scenarios for what bringing students, staff, and faculty back to campus will look like. And we want to thank you for ensuring our safety and continuing to think conscientiously about how to keep moving this campus forward. To all our faculty and instructors who have faced the challenge of transferring to online and remote learning, thank you. Navigating the changes and ensuring our students will continue to get an education, no matter where they are located, has been no small task. The tenacity and determination you demonstrated in order to make this transition as smooth as possible for our students has not gone unnoticed. Your roles as educators have increased exponentially as you are now also working to help nurture your students as well as support them emotionally. Many of our graduate students have been doing three to four times more work and gave up much of their own spring break in order to ensure the courses they are teaching were able to continue as well as continuing to be successful in their own classes. And some of them have even faced delayed graduation depending on their discipline. Without your help and support, ISU would not be strong nor as stable as we currently are. You are all doing an amazing job, and we thank you for all you do. To all of our staff members who are supporting our students behind the scenes, thank you. Our staff members, including academic advisors, financial aid counselors, student counseling services, housing and dining staff, and many more are working remotely to support students as they register for courses, plan for the future, and work through the mental and emotional strain of these challenging times. To all staff still working on campus to ensure building safety, cleanliness, ground maintenance, food service, and to everyone who is still coming to work every day to ensure our campus continues to function, we appreciate you. Thank you to Administrative Technologies and the Center for Teaching, Learning, and Technology for all of your assistance in getting our workforce up and running from home. The long days and problem solving, how to best serve those transitioning to work from home, as well as helping to support our students virtually and help to support their needs during this transition, we thank you. There are also many areas on campus working to provide students with assistance during these trying times. To date, ISU has given over $500,000 to help students with rent, food, and supplies. The COVID-19 Redbird Response Fund is a fund specifically designed to help students in need and is raising more money by the day. The School Street Food Pantry continues to put together bags of food for any students and community members in need. While we continue to face uncertain times, our Redbirds rely on us to keep them feeling safe, secure, and included. Although the move to online learning has shown what ISU can do in a quick turnaround time, it also reminds us just how much we love and miss our students on campus and our brick-and-mortar buildings, as well as how much our students love and miss our campus and their brick-and-mortar learning. We miss the vibrancy of the quad on spring and summer days, and we miss the face-to-face interactions with our faculty, staff, and students. We also want to thank all of you in our community, healthcare workers, police, emergency management services, fire, and many more who work to keep us all safe and secure. We cannot express our appreciation enough for your courage, service, and selflessness. We certainly look forward to being back on campus with our students, faculty, and staff. But in the meantime, we will all keep doing our best from a distance and look forward to the days of return. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you to all of you who are continuing to do everything that you can to ensure that our students are okay. You are all doing a great job, and we appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Beth. We, uh, we all, I think, look forward to that day. That's going to be a great day whenever we're all back and, and, uh, can physically greet each other. That's really just terrific. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is a brief presentation about, um, uh, some dashboard work. We've talked about, uh, dashboard, uh, presentations and ways that we can, um, demonstrate, uh, progress on various items through, uh, more of a dashboard kind of format. And, uh, we've had folks from our, um, finance and planning area, particularly our planning area, that have been working on this for some time. Uh, we've kind of drawn a line in the sand to look at, um, uh, our Educate, Connect, Elevate strategic plan as a little bit of a starting point on this. And, and, uh, Angela Engel and her team, uh, have really done a great job to get us to where we are. But we wanted to, to have Angela, uh, present some information about what they're working on to get, uh, some feedback, but also to let you know, uh, kind of the directions that we're headed, uh, related to, uh, that dashboard kind of presentation. So Angela, if you're on, uh, if you're on, you're on, so.
All right, thank you, Dr. Dietz. Um, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, um, first. All right. Well, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to present the university's Strategic Plan Metrics Dashboard today on behalf of the Educate, Connect, Elevate Illinois State Coordinating Team. Earlier this spring, we were approached to develop dashboards that exhibit university-level metrics. And at that time, we were building a dashboard to display the Educate, Connect, Elevate Illinois State metrics and determined that these metrics would be an inappropriate, um, first pass at sharing metrics with the university leadership. Before I begin, I would like to thank a working group comprised of colleagues from planning, research, and policy analysis, enterprise data and analytics, web and interactive communications for their hard work and dedication on the development and implementation of this dashboard. The purpose of these metrics is to exhibit the progress the university has made in implementing the strategic directions, objectives, and actions outlined in the plan. These metrics are categorized into four broad themes: access and affordability, student success, faculty and staff, and institutional resources. A complete list of the metrics can be found on the Strategic Plan website. The data provided in these dashboards are for the most recent full year of reporting available and serve as a baseline for Educate, Connect, Elevate's first fiscal year of implement- implementation. An additional data will be added each year throughout the duration of the plan's implementation. Comparison data for Illinois public universities are also included where possible and reflect the most recent five years of data available. Um, at this time, I thought it'd be a good idea to go ahead and do a little bit of a brief demonstration of the dashboard. So the screen that I have shared is the homepage for the metrics dashboard. As I mentioned, there are four themes within, um, the metrics grouping. There are a- access and affordability, student success, faculty and staff, and institutional resources. For the purposes of this demonstration, I'm going to focus on one of the metrics contained within student success. Um, within student success, there are five different dashboards. There's a dashboard for retention rates, credit completions, enriched dash, enriched educational experiences, graduation rates, There's a dashboard for retention rates, credit completions, enriched educational experiences, graduation rates, and career outcomes. But today, we're going to focus on the graduation rates. Once it loads. So the first dashboard in this set represents the most recent graduation rate that we have reported for ISU. So this is a six-year graduation rate for the fall 2013 cohort. So of the, on the left-hand, on the upper left-hand corner, you can see a count of how many students we had. So of the first-time-in-college students that we had in fall 2013, there were 2,974 of them. 69.5% of those students graduated within six years. We also have included in this dashboard some breakdowns for some drill downs if there is interest in that. They include Pell Grant recipients, a breakout by gender, and a breakout by race ethnicity. And on the left-hand side here, there are some filter boxes that if you're interested in doing some drill downs of some subpopulations, you can do so. So for example, if you wanted to just look at female students, you could unclick the male, and then all of a sudden you can see how all the numbers shifted, and you can see what the female graduation rate data show. On the next page, I want to demonstrate, this is, this represents the Illinois Public University comparisons that I mentioned. There are 12 Illinois public universities. As you can see, Governor State is missing data. The reason there are no data included for that university is prior to the data being reported on this graph, they did not admit first-time-in-college students. They were considered an upper-level division university. So I believe beginning in fall of 2014, they began admitting first-time-in-college students. So in the next couple of years, we'll start to see data show up here for Governor State. Also included on this graph, on the far right-hand side, is a median of the Illinois public universities total. So you can see what the midpoints are across the board for the state public universities. As I mentioned in the previous dashboard, there's also options here to filter. So you can filter by type of, by year, or you could filter by institution. So for example, if you wanted to look at Illinois State compared to, say, Northern University of Illinois at Chicago, and then how about the median? You can select the different universities that you would like to take a look at. So you can see for each of the universities, you can see the five-year comparison for each institution. But you can also see across the board how they rank from one another. I'm going to go ahead and restore this filter and point out real quickly that within the Illinois public universities, Illinois State ranks second in graduation rates, only to the University of Illinois and Urbana-Champaign. We are also well above the national average. The national average for the fall 2012 cohort was 60%. So with our 69.5% graduation rate, you can see that we are well above both the Illinois Public University median as well as the national average. I'm going to go ahead and go back to the main page and close out. So thank you again for the opportunity to provide a quick look at the Educate, Connect, Elevate Illinois State dashboard. For your convenience, a help document and glossary of terms are also included on the webpage. They are linked at the top paragraph that you're seeing here, as well as the complete list of metrics that we mentioned. That's at a glance view. If you click into any one of these other boxes, you can also see that those links are also on the left-hand side here. So if you have an interest in taking a look at that after the meeting, feel free to do so. We have also included an email address at the top of this page. Should you have any questions after this, we're welcome, you're welcome to reach out to us, and we can address any questions that you may have. The link to the dashboard is located on the strategic plan website, but there's also a link off of the Board of Trustees' website within the resources section. Before I close, are there any questions that I can entertain?
Angela, thank you for your presentation this morning. This is Julie. I do have a couple, a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
The first one is, again, I want to say thank you. This is fantastic work. It was good to be able to see this. I'm assuming that this is live right now. How long has this been live on our site?
This morning.
Okay. So we're getting the first view of it. It feels so special. The second thing I have is I know that you mentioned about updating, and I know you said something about annual updates. And I know for something like graduation rates, that, and again, I appreciate that this is new and we haven't had a chance to look at it. But I'm going to assume that there may be things on here about admissions and accepted students. Maybe I'm not assuming correctly. How frequently do you anticipate those type of things that are going to be updated, since those are rolling numbers? And they don't have to wait to the end of the year?
Well, there are two different levels of metrics. The metrics that you saw in this dashboard are ones that are updated once a year. So they are based off of a point in time, and these represent reporting that we do to the federal and state government. So these are done once a year. There's also metrics that are in real time that may also be of interest. We are working, the next stage of metrics that we're looking at are adding some admissions data. We're also looking at expanding some of the enrollment and retention rate data that are included in this dashboard, as well as looking at degree data, some other financial metrics and such. And then we will also plan on adding some additional peer comparison data as well beyond the Illinois Public University. So there's, there's some further dashboards that are in development that will be shared in the coming months.
Thank you, Angela. Trustees, do we have any other questions?
Mary Ann, I have just one, my usual question. Do we have any data on our four-year university graduates? Is there any way we can, this is a continual thing, because as we, you know, look at financially and everything else, is there any way that we can figure out how we are as far as a four-year graduation?
Yes. We, so what you see in the dashboard are the six-year graduation rates. We also calculate four-year and five-year graduation rates. Those just aren't as public as others. They are, we do publish them to iPads. We just don't typically throw the number out there, but we definitely could add those into the, into future dashboards if that's of interest.
I'd be interested in it if you, I mean, even to send it to us for the, for now, and then have a discussion about it.
Absolutely.
I think there are some, some issues like the one you just mentioned about, you know, the four-year that's really not typically a part of federal or state reporting, but would be worthwhile internally for you to know that we'll probably just share with the Board of Trustees. The other part is admissions information, since that changes pretty much on a daily basis and weekly basis. I think that that's something that we've already shared with board, but we tend not to put that on our websites because of the, you know, the changing nature of that. And so we're a little more proprietary, I guess, about, about that kind of information right now. But that's no reason that the board can't, can't have that kind of information. I'd also be remiss if I didn't say to begin this process, we hired a consulting company for a very short period of time to get an idea of, you know, are we heading in the right directions with the kind of information that we're trying to, you know, put into dashboards? And they were helpful in, in helping provide some of that direction. But very quickly, Angela and her team said, you know, now that we have this and we have our own strategic plan, we're up to this task. And boy, they've done a terrific job. We're still getting used to it. And so, you know, we'll continue to make improvements and get used to navigating around the site. But this is a terrific improvement compared to where the institution's ever been on this. So great work, Angela.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dietz. Thank you, Angela. Any other trustees have a question, any questions? I have just one final comment on this matter. I, I think that this is great, just to piggyback on what Mary Ann was saying and to add what Dr. Dietz was saying as well. I think this is great for our public-facing document, but I would love to see this more vigorously utilized for reporting that we receive as trustees. So maybe it's not something that's appropriate to go on this avenue, but I'm assuming since the framework is here, that reports can be driven based on this that could be given to us at our quarterly trustee meetings to give us updates. So this is definitely the format we would like to see. But of course, as trustees, we need to drill down just a little bit more than the general public. So I, I think this is a wonderful first step and a wonderful step to our public rollout to this type of information.
I think it'd also be very helpful in our longer fall retreats that we've had. I think this would be, will help us, give us some data that'll help inform, you know, decision-making that comes out of that retreat.
Excellent. I agree. Final call for trustees. Any further questions for Angela or Dr. Dietz regarding this dashboard and these metrics in the dashboard? I certainly recommend that all the trustees in your coronavirus-involved downtime, that you take a moment to peruse this. You may have more time than you have had in the past to look at it, and when things ramp back up, you may not be able to. So I would like for all of you all to give this a look, see, and see if there's any questions, concerns you have, and reach out and see that we can continue to work on this site, because this is, this is wonderful. I'm glad to be able to see this information.
Hey Julie, this is Sharon. I'd just like to make a comment to thank the team for putting this together. I think this is an excellent start, and as Dr. Dietz knows, this is something that we as a trustee group have been asking for additional data and access to it. So kudos to the team that's been working on this, and I think this is a great start to giving us greater access and clarity to the metrics of the university. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon, for your comments. Anything else from any of the other trustees on this subject matter? Okay, if not, Dr. Dietz, we're going to move over to you. I know you have some resolutions that we need to address this morning.
Yes, thank you very much. And again, thanks Angela and your team for that presentation. There are six resolutions that I bring this morning for the board's consideration, and I will move into those now. Resolution number one is a resolution number 2020 dot O5 slash 10 FY 2021 spending authorization. As this is the last quarterly meeting of the board in this fiscal year, we are coming to you for approval of the university's annual operating budget for fiscal year 2021, timeframe July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. We ask your approval to expend funds according to the FY 2021 spending authorization by object and function of expenditure. Your approval simply grants this authority until the board takes further action on the fiscal year 2020 operating budget, which typically occurs at the quarterly meeting in October, but is reliant upon a final known appropriation from the state, which obviously we don't know at this time. This year, similar to FY 15 and 16, is filled with financial uncertainty. And I pledge to you that we will be good stewards of the university's funds, closely watching expenditures in anticipation of any potential reduction in state funding for FY 2021. But we need approval of this resolution in order for us to do business beyond June 30 of this year, and I ask for that approval.
May I have a motion and a second from the board for this resolution?
Navarro will motion.
Dobski, second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by trustee Navarro and a second by trustee Dobski. Is there any discussion on this particular item on the, on the, on the agenda?
Trustee Jones, this is trustee Donahue.
Yes.
Thank you. I have, Dr. Dietz and I, I'm definitely going to vote for this, because I understand we have to spend money, and I appreciate your, your comments about the uncertainty. But is similar to the dashboard, during the next couple of months, can you ensure you, you just as part of your updates, keep us informed as to expenditures and revenues? Because as you stated, it's just so uncertain, and I, I would rather have a continuing knowing of what's going on than just all of a sudden October be hit with, oh, oh. Because I, I'm imagining we've had additional expenses due to the, this COVID-19 crisis, and I'm assuming we've had a loss in revenues.
Yes, yes. Be happy to do that. Vice President Stevens is on the call here, obviously, today, and I see his head down taking notes, and so we would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Donahue, for those comments. I think that echoes what all of the board would like to see. So thank you for speaking up on that matter. Do we have any further discussion on this agenda item this morning before we take a vote? Okay, seeing none indicated, we have, again, a motion on the floor from trustee Navarro, a second for trustee Dobski. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We approve this resolution.
Thank you. Next resolution is number 2020 dot O5 slash 11 FY 2021 Student Tuition Fees and Room and Board Rates. Illinois State University remains committed to making college affordable, as evidenced in our national rankings as Best Buy for the money by College Factual and Best Bang for the buck by Washington Monthly. Setting tuition and fee rates continues to be a complex exercise, particularly in light of historical declines in state financial support, lack of predictability of the state of Illinois budget process, and potential impacts of COVID-19 on enrollment. For the academic year 2021, we are requesting that there be no or zero increase in tuition or room and board over academic year 2019, 2020 rates. The university is proposing an overall total cost increase of $487 on the year or 1.97% increase, including a February 2020 board-approved increase of $22 for academic year for optional student health insurance. The cost increase is well below the 2% to 5% increase other Illinois public universities have either approved or considering at this point. While the increase, with the increase, the total cost of attendance for a full-time student, including student health insurance, would be $25,169 before any financial aid is applied. Our average amount of financial aid and support is nearly $10,000 per student in scholarship and grant funding. Students also have access this current year and will for this next year to over $8 million in emergency assistance, thanks to the CARES Act that can offset any increase in the fees. We plan to spend a good deal of this money this year, but we're also setting aside some funding for next year for students who need it. Mandatory fees are requested to increase by 16.8% overall as a result of an increase only in the academic enhancement fee. The academic enhancement fee provides much-needed funding for technology and academic facilities. Funds are used to enhance the delivery of instruction through appropriate learning environments and supportive infrastructure, including the purchase, installation, and maintenance of software, hardware, and technology systems to support academic learning, as well as construction of new academic buildings and physical structures. Even with the increases of fall 2020, Illinois State remains in the lower tier among the 12 public universities in Illinois in total cost and more than $6,500 per year less than the University of Illinois without including differential tuition. I also want to remind everyone that Illinois State receives the lowest state appropriation per student by thousands of dollars per student. So we need a modest increase to offset the lowest per student state appropriation in the state. And with that, I ask for your approval of this resolution.
May I please have a motion and a second for this resolution?
This is Bone. So move.
Do I have a session?
Donahue, second.
Okay, seeing that we have a motion on the floor by trustee Bone and a second by trustee Donahue, do we have any discussion?
Just a point. It's Sarah Aguilar here.
Please proceed, trustee Aguilar.
Thank you. Just as we had talked about previously in our meeting, in our previous meeting, I still just have concerns about this. I know that it is a modest increase, and I understand the need for, you know, technology and all that was just discussed. But just from my constituents and where I stand as a student trustee, students have expressed to me their concerns with this fee. I know that we have the CARES Act, and all students are very grateful for that support. But in this time, that is very difficult for many students. That money will most likely be going towards food and towards, you know, like necessities, probably not fees first off. So I just still have some concerns there and just from where I stand as far as the student trustee. My constituents wanted me to echo that, so I stand strong in that and just want you all to really consider that when voting. And if this does pass, to please, you know, continue to support the students as ISU always does. And they are always there for the students, but I know that this is of concern. So, thank you.
Thank you trustee Aguilar. Do we have any other comments from any other trustees on this matter?
Yeah, Julie, just maybe for Jonathan Lackland, just a question. I probably know the answer to this Jonathan. But any, that comment about our average per student received from the state compared to other, the state universities? Anything, any indication there might be something down the road here to, to change that for the benefit ISU?
Trustee Dobski, great question. We're still hoping for that for this specific session for an approach cycle, probably not. We would hope maybe for next session, that may be a possibility. This session specifically, we have been pushing for that number to go up since COVID has hit. Honest, we have pushing for at least a flat budget scenario. But again, our hope for next session is that we can get that per funding up next year.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you trustee Dobski, thank you Dr. Lackland. Any other questions from the trustees or discussion regarding this particular resolution?
Mary, this is Mary Ann. I guess my question is, how did we come to the amount of money? How did we determine why we needed that amount in? Did we pull out of the sky or what was the discussion there?
We looked at a variety of scenarios and it was really in, in the context of the other fees, not increasing the other fees. There was a sensitivity of trying to keep the overall increase below that of inflation, though the inflation rate is really, you know, that, that's a nebulous figure right now in this COVID environment. But we tried to keep the, the figure overall in terms of total cost below the two percent, which is historically been kind of a rate of inflation, if you will. And, and then where we needed the, the money and the infrastructure needs and the technology needs, we felt were the, the highest level of needs. And so frankly, we, we backed into the dollar amount from those two assumptions.
Thank you.
Thank you trustee Lauterback, thank you Dr. Dietz. Any further questions or discussion?
Go ahead.
Trustee Ross Mark?
Yes, I was just gonna make a comment that I have previously, previously expressed and I just want to express it again is that as we look at these type of expenditures or these type of increases, that we definitely put an effort into prioritizing particularly technology, given where we are with the online environment. And then also as we start looking at actual student counts returning for the fall or even incoming, that we further model any potential impact this, this number or changes to this number again or to this fee again, based on maybe a smaller on-campus student, student base. Just because I, I just think we need to, this number probably was based on, I'm guessing, is based on the status quo of previous year. And if there's likely to be a significant change in our student count, that we are aware and need looking at what that potential fee increase could be moving forward with the smaller student base.
Point's well taken.
Thank you trustee Ross Mark. Trustee Dobski, I believe you had further comment as well?
Well, no, I was gonna ask, I know this is, we're talking about the, the actual budget number and that. But for maybe LJ to address is the, the housing situation. I think at the, at the end of, or last year, and assuming we're gonna be in the fall back to normal, whatever normal is gonna be. But is there, is there any concerns now about housing coming up for this fall session if we get back there?
Well, again, that's one of the things that President Dietz explained with all the work groups that are out there. We also have a specific work group on the housing situation and are coming up with various scenarios. And definitely if we have to go to scenarios where we are exercising social distance and have fewer folks within our residential environments, that's gonna affect our bottom line as it relates to our room and, and board as well. Though, but we're working through various scenarios as it relates to that. We're very hopeful and, and, and trying to go with plans as well. We are, we are hoping that students and families again come back and we'll just have to see where we, we end up in in that sense.
Thanks LJ.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you trustee Dobski. Any other questions or comments on this particular resolution? I hear, I hear a bark. I, I would just like to, oh, I'm sorry trustee Navarro, do you have a question, comment?
I, I have a question about this semester. I understand that some of the fees were returned to students. Can you just remind us, Dr. Dietz, on what was returned to students on the fee side?
Sure, we returned, and it's all prorated based upon the, you know, the, the change in the spring semester. But we returned roughly twenty million dollars in room and board and some selected fees. Dan, you might wanna go into the specifics about, you know, beyond the room and board.
Thank you Dr. Dietz. Yeah, that's correct. We earlier in the, in the April timeframe, which we studied the application of the housing and dining. We also did an internal analysis around a portion of mandatory student fees. That amount of money was around three million dollars. We also, and that's been sent out to the students. We also provided a, a, a portion of the student parking fee from essentially March, the March sixteen timeline until May fifteenth. So as Dr. Dietz says, we've, when you combine about, about fifteen to sixteen million dollars of, of housing and dining and student fees, we're up to almost about twenty million dollars in overall fees. Funds provided directly back to students and those fees have been already processed.
Are some of those like the Bone Student Center fee and health services and wellness? I mean, what were some of those fees that were returned?
We essentially did a, an overall group of our entire mandatory student fees and just arrived at a, a, just a per dollar amount, I think it was around twelve dollars and fifty cents per credit hour. And so it was calculated that way. It was a, a collective view of all of those areas.
Thank you.
I might also mention that the presidents and chancellors, we continue to talk about all these issues at least once a week. And our dollar amount was within a context of what other institutions in the state were, were refunding. So we had a statewide conversation about that.
Thank you trustee Navarro and vice president Stevens and also Dr. Dietz. Any other questions, concerns, discussion? Trustee Lauterback?
As Dan was talking about their working group, are we look, when are we looking to having some, a little more concrete as to what's gonna happen in the fall after the June one final of admissions come in? Or what's like with all of the upperclassmen coming and the sophomores coming back?
Yeah, our, our focus with the, both the EOC group and the cabinet initially was to, you know, how do you get through spring semester and all the online transition and moving people out of residence halls, et cetera. Second phase was really decisions for the summer and, you know, all online for the summer and, and, you know, postponement or cancellation of summer events, those kinds of things. Our shift right now for all of those sixteen working groups and EOC and cabinet is, is ninety percent of our time is spent looking at the fall and fall scenarios. There's gonna be one scenario, obviously with the governor and whenever his stay-at-home order expires and whether or not that's extended again will help determine some of that. What we've said kind of overall is that we're going to try to be as close to a, a, a regular fall semester as we can, given restrictions for health and safety. So we're looking at, you know, how many classes can we offer? We're, we're looking both online as well as the numbers of students that are gonna be enrolling overall. We're down a little bit right now and I think most institutions are across the state. So that's gonna determine a lot for the fall. We're looking at large classrooms and how we might be able to either make those, fewer numbers of students in those large lecture halls. Whether that's adding additional sections or however we might accommodate that. We're looking at the housing and how many students we can accommodate in housing, either with individuals in, in individual rooms or multiple students in rooms, dining, it's, it's the whole gamut right now. So it's really kind of an ongoing process. You know, there are times that the governor changes that on us and we adapt to that, but all those things are being considered right now. I think in another month, I'll be able to, at the end of this month, I'll be able to clarify a little bit more about our plans. Then we adopt or, or adapt our plans on decisions that are made outside of our scope of authority. I think in another month, we'll, we'll have an idea. July to me is a critical month. I think the other part is that we've extended our deposit date from May one to June one. And I think a lot of folks are taking that extra time making decisions. And so I think, you know, June one will be a, a time that we will have better information.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you trustee Lauterback, thank you Dr. Dietz. One thing I would just like to say, to, to respond to trustee Aguilar's concerns and the student concerns. All of the responsibilities that the board of trustees have are very, very important and we take them extremely serious for the, the development of our university and keeping us on the right path. But I think none of them, none of them exceed what we feel about tuition and fees and, and how we move forward. And one of our main objectives is always to keep Illinois State as a reasonably priced university with an outstanding education that we provide for our students. So I just want to say for the record, something that I would hope is fairly obvious that this is something that we put lots of thought into. This is not something that we decide just based on this particular conversation. For those who are not aware of how the board of trustees works, we get tons of feedback and information to consider from the university that we utilize to impact our decisions in this area. And so we are very sensitive to the fact that we want to remain an affordable university, but we also have to balance that with making sure that we keep the quality of our education on standard with what our students are used to receiving. So we thank you and we appreciate trustee Aguilar for stepping up and speaking up for our students. That is what we expect from a student trustee, but I want to state publicly and for the record that there's lots of thoughtful deliberation put into this, whatever decision we make in the area of tuition, fees, room and board, anything that financially impacts our students and their families. Any further question, comments, concerns regarding this matter? If not, we will move to vote. Okay, we have a motion on the floor from trustee Bone and a second from trustee Donahue. All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Okay, so we have one in opposition, trustee Aguilar voted no to proceed. All other votes were to proceed with this resolution, so this resolution is approved. Thank you very much trustees and move on to the next resolution.
Thank you very much. Next resolution is number twenty twenty dot oh five slash twelve. Contract for Milner Library journal subscriptions. Every spring, we bring to the board a resolution to contract for periodical database and subscription services for Milner Library. University has a contract with EBSCO Industries for this service at a cost that's to exceed two point four million dollars in general revenue funds. This will assure availability of the journals and databases to support quality programs and research at, at the university. And I ask for your approval of this resolution.
Navarro, I so move.
We have a motion by trustee Navarro, any second?
Lauterback.
Second by trustee Lauterback. Do we have any discussion on this particular resolution?
Yes, I, I have a question.
Trustee Ross Mark, please proceed.
Yes, I'm interested in knowing that given the expense associated with these journals, are they also available to the students electronically? So since we right now are in an online environment and likely will continue as some, it's some substantial rate moving forward. Do they also have access to these periodicals and subscriptions?
I wanna turn to Provost Murphy.
Sorry, yes, they certainly do. And in fact, some of these journals are only online. We see more and more of those kinds of journals moved to completely online. So the databases, the search mechanisms and the journals themselves are certainly available online. And then realize that journals that we don't hold physically ourselves, have subscriptions to ourselves, we can also get to students because we're part of a large university network or library network. So, yes.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you.
I see trustee Lauterback?
I, just kind of a basic question. I'm assuming that we go through all of these subscriptions every year to decide if, determine if they really need the same ones. And, you know, if it's, if we keep the same one, I noticed that we kinda roll over the, the cost. But we're checking to make sure they're the ones that we need.
Right, that's a great question. So each of our academic areas have a, a subject matter librarian at Milner who's affiliated with those areas. And so those subject matter librarians work with the faculty in their discipline areas to make sure that they're ordering the right journals, that they're changing, eliminating journals. And, and we monitor usage of them too, so then they can share that usage data with the faculty in a discipline area to say, you know, students aren't using this journal, do we, do we need it any longer if they're in? And more and more journals are very specialized, so that makes those conversations very important. That's a great question.
Thank you very much.
Any further question, concern, comment on this matter?
Yeah, Jan, Jill, for Jan, wouldn't we save a lot of money if we just told the students to Google everything and then not get periodicals when they find everything on Google? So.
Yeah, great question and, and no. But a great, but great enthusiasm for that question, but no, you know, what we, what we provide through, you know, to Google something, you're not going to have access to those journals because you have to have a subscription to have access to those journals. So, but thank you.
I understand, no problem. But that's how I find all my information.
I almost said you and me both and I thought, boy, that's another very provostial thing to say.
Either, either that or I ask my wife everything, so she knows everything.
Uh, trustee Aguilar, I believe I saw a hand.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I know like for my articles and other students' articles, it costs like forty dollars just to access one. So, but with the help of this system, we can access like thousands and thousands all for free. So it's such a great resource.
Thank you trustee Aguilar. Dr. Zek, do you care to chime in for what may be your last trustee meeting? I know you're the resident expert here on this matter.
Thank you. I'll just echo what my boss said, because smart. But actually this EBSCO contract is predominantly our electronic journals. So this is one of the main means by which we're able to offer those journals electronically.
Thank you. Any further questions, concerns, comments? Okay, seeing none, I gotta look to make sure I do see none. Okay, seeing none, we have a motion by trustee Navarro and a second by trustee Lauterback. All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this resolution is approved.
Thank you very much. Next resolution is resolution number twenty twenty dot oh five slash thirteen. Connect Transit contract extension. The university partners with Connect Transit, the Bloomington Normal Public Bus System, to provide students, faculty and staff access to routes throughout the Bloomington Normal community, including the university campus. The Redbird Express Route provides transportation around the university campus from seven AM to twelve AM, Sunday through Thursday and from seven AM to three AM on Friday and Saturday during fall and spring semesters on all regularly scheduled class days. There are fifteen campus stops on the Redbird Express Route. And in FY eighteen, university accounted for five hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and nineteen rides and ridership numbers tended upward in recent years. Negotiations on a new agreement are in progress. We've made really good progress and I will turn to Vice President Stevens for an update in just a minute, but Vice President Stevens for an update in just a minute, but we are making great progress with the current contract that's expiring June 30 of 2020. Today, we're seeking the Board's approval to enter into a six-month extension of the current agreement for the period of July 1, 2020 to December 31, 2020 for an amount not to exceed $295,000. The source of funds for the contract are student fee revenues. An agreement is contingent, as it always is upon the approval by the Connect Transit Board of Trustees. We've had interesting experience with them this last year, but I think we have great hope for the future. And before I ask for approval of the resolution, I will turn to Vice President Stevens to give some updates that we got as recently as yesterday.
Thank you, Dr. Dietz. It's true, we've been trying to work with Connect Transit to contract put in place as there were face-to-face meetings set up during the term. Unfortunately, some of those had to move to phone calls after the virus hit. Just, and we've had conversations with them. They've been obviously much more supportive of the environment now. They are, as you can imagine, are equally struggling given their reduction in ridership. And so based on those conversations and our desire to continue to work well with them, we received communication back from them yesterday that they were going to recommend to their board that the contract extension, at least for the six months, will be without any increase at all. And so we're not sure we'll be able to achieve that as we continue to move forward. But we're certainly continuing to try to work with them and make sure we can keep our our services provided in, you know, in the fall environment and continuing over the summer, even though we don't have students here, it's, but just trying to continue the contract in a in a positive light and especially as we come out of this environment and we have our students back here on the fall.
I might also mention that we've also looked into other alternatives. In addition to this contract, we've looked into the possibility of providing you know, our own service. And there are possibilities out there for that. So in case the you know, the discussions don't go as well as what we had hoped, we have some other alternatives. But we're continuing to look into that, but we're optimistic about this one. So I would reiterate what we're seeking is the Board's approval to enter into a six-month extension of the current agreement from July 1 to December 31, 2020 in this amount not to exceed $295,000. And I ask for your approval of this resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Dietz. Thank you, Dr. Stevens. Do we have a motion and a second?
Moved by Lauterback.
Second by Bone.
We have a motion on the floor by Trustee Lauterback and a second by Trustee Bone. Do we have any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
What has been the ridership, you know, since there are no students currently? And moving forward, or very few students on campus currently, and moving forward in the fall, worst-case scenario, if we're not able to have the students back on campus, is there any provision for this? Would there be a possibility for something being different? I mean, I'm assuming that it's not being utilized to full capacity at this point in time.
It's not at this point in time, but we have to honor the contract that we're in.
Right.
What they would say is that the enrollment issue, if let's say that that does go down for the fall, we hope it doesn't, but if it does, they still have to provide the equipment regardless of the number of people that are riding it. So that is something that we would, you know, take a look at in terms of the number of stops and those kinds of things, but typically, you know, with this contract, we're not looking at students having to pay, you know, a per- rider amount. That's the beauty part of having the larger contract. So we don't get a reduction typically if we go from a ridership of, as I've said, at 18 of nearly 600,000, you know, to 500,000. There's no way they can discount that because they've got the equipment committed and they've got the staff driving the buses committed. And so I'm not anticipating that that would go down. I wish it would, but we'll bring it up, but I'm not sure that that's a feasible thing right now.
Thank you, Trustee Bone. Thank you, Dr. Dietz. I see Trustee Donahue, you may proceed.
Thank you, Chairman. So Trustee Bone kind of triggered me to think about something there, so I'm gonna blame her for my comment. Dr. Dietz said, along those lines, have we established or tried to with Connect Transit, what I would say, a Fairbox recovery ratio where 30% of their costs come through the fairs? So we set a benchmark, and then if we have more students ride, we actually get credit for the revenue. Because I'm just wondering how we do the contract, kind of like what what Trustee Bone was saying is not suggesting we would pay more if there were less students. They get a minimum guarantee, but if we go above that guarantee, we should be able to recapture some of that. Ridership is a reduced level of revenue, so to speak. Because just as you said, they have a fixed cost. So if one person's on the bus or 100 people are on the bus, their cost remains the same. But if they're collecting more revenue because of more people, that's and I'm getting into negotiations, which I shouldn't. I apologize, but I'm just wondering if we've thought about those things.
I turn to Vice President Stevens.
We have, especially last year, had, as we were negotiating with them earlier, their proposals have been wanting to move the institution to a per- ridership rate every time somebody gets on the bus and their the rates by which they wanted to charge ISU similar to how they charged the Bloomington Normal Community would have raised our fees that we're paying now substantially higher than what they are. So we've bought essentially a lower ridership rate that is backed by the number of buses that they use and the routes that they provide. And so we're constantly looking at their service level. Now granted, we, our contracts have not been predicated on an environment like we have today. And I'm hoping that as we move forward, we'll return to to a setting similar to what we've had in the past, but now that we've seen this type of scenario kind of occurring, trying to get some level of variability in that rate relative to, in a fixed rate. Whereas you can imagine trying to negotiate that with a, with an organization that does have to provide those services regardless of the number of people that ride the bus just makes it a little difficult to reach consensus on both sides.
Sure. I might be able to help you if you need something just from a cost perspective, ballpark figure. Bloomington Normal from State of Illinois gets a a 65% reimbursement for their expenses. And then I'm sure you could figure out, because it's their public agency, what the cities of Bloomington and Normal are putting in. So my guess is that the passengers are probably paying 15 or 20% of the cost. And so I would maybe arm yourself with that and make sure we're only paying that same amount. They're not charging you the fully allocated cost because they're getting reimbursed for the expenses they're doing for ISU from the state and I'm assuming whatever contractual arrangement they have from Bloomington Normal. But I don't need to keep making this longer than it is, but if I can help you with that, let me know.
Appreciate the offer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns regarding this particular resolution? Seeing none, we have a motion by Trustee Lauterback and a second by Trustee Bone. All those in favor signify by an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This resolution is approved?
Thank you very much. The next two resolutions regarding the greenhouse at Falmley and the Student Success Center involve construction projects partially funded by the academic enhancement fee. And while I still want to present these for some discussion and background based upon conversations with each of the trustees as recent as last night, I'd like to take a little bit different approach and say that what I heard from the trustees individually and collectively is that with the academic enhancement fee money, that the highest priority within the general description of that fee is technology. And that there seems to be, there's an interest in these projects, but a concern about a budget overall and uncertainty of budget for this next year. And also as sensitivity that the investment should be made in technology at least right now. And we're not talking about, you know, potentially not funding these out of this account, but perhaps postponing them for a short period of time. So within that context, I want to present these two resolutions and I'll present them each one at a time in case you have individual discussions. And you can obviously vote for approval if you want, but I'm gonna ask for consideration and based upon those discussions, we are prepared to postpone these if need be and focus on the technology piece of this. So let me then turn first of all to the first resolution, Resolution Number 2020.05/15. The Falmley Science Annex, really affectionately known as the Greenhouse Replacement. Falmley Science Annex Greenhouse opened in 1964 to serve as an educational facility for the Illinois State University Biology Department. The greenhouse has deteriorated to the point of failure resulting in significant deferred maintenance issues and resulting in public health and safety concerns to the extent that it can no longer be used to teach classes or do research. I've since done some additional research into that and basically what we've lost is a, is a facility that served somewhere around 3,000 students in their pursuit of classes related to biology and botany. So it's closed down for that, so we badly need the facility. The university had an outside consultant examine the greenhouse and advise us that the existing building did not meet current energy or building codes was in such poor quality that it would be more cost-effective to construct a new greenhouse than attempt to make necessary repairs. I've been in the facility and I'm not a consultant that you would hire to examine facilities, but I can tell you it's in sad shape and closing it has been the right thing to do. But we do have a lot of students that potentially need this facility and would have higher quality in their coursework if we had a new greenhouse. The resolution is for a capital project to plan, design and construct a replacement for the Falmley Center Science Annex Greenhouse at a cost not to exceed $4 million. And the funding would come from general revenue and a potential academic enhancement fee. With that overall description, I would ask for your consideration of this resolution.
So, thank you, Dr. Dietz. So for some clarity, hello? I'm sorry, my screen was frozen, so I wasn't sure if you all could hear me. So for some clarity, at this time, I do not believe Dr. Dietz is seeking a vote on this resolution. He wants some consideration. If they can move forward and examine this and perhaps if we have some discussion for it, maybe it can be revisited at the next trustee meeting. Is that correct, Dr. Dietz?
It is. We, you know, this is going to be a longer-term project. It's not a quick fix. Dan, I think it's probably a two-year project.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So the first part would be, you know, as with any project like this, is issuing RFPs for architects and design components of that, you know, and then there's the, all the RFPs about the actual construction of the project. So even if, let's say that the Board approved this today, nothing would be built there tomorrow or potentially the next year. Typically, any facility of any size at all, it generally takes about a year and a half to design and about a year and a half to build. This one's a little smaller project, but it still probably is anywhere from six months to a year to actually design this and then another year to probably build it out. So if this was approved today, there wouldn't be, you know, the expenditures and any building going on for probably close to a year.
Thank you, Dr. Dietz, for the clarity. So I'm going to present this, since it is part of our resolutions, to see if we have anyone who would like to entertain a motion for approving of this resolution in a second. And if we have enough to approve it, then so be it. And if we don't get the approval to move forward, then we will revisit it later. And we can certainly have some discussions around that. So first of all, I'm asking if we have a motion or a second to approve this resolution. Does not seem like I have a motion to move forward with this at this time. So we can entertain some discussion at this point. I will start with my question and then open it up to the rest of the trustees. The first question I have is how long has this, how long has the greenhouse been closed? And what are the students currently doing now? Who would be taking courses in the greenhouse since it's not available?
I'm gonna turn to Provost Murphy.
Yeah, the greenhouse, I believe, has been closed about three years and you've seen it. It sits right on the quad and it's a, it's a building that's falling apart. And so, you know, these are students, these are not just biological science students. These are general education students. We're not able to provide adequate support and adequate facilities for students who take biology courses in general education. These are agronomy and horticulture majors in the Department of Ag. So I believe Craig Gatto, who is the Director of the School of Biological Sciences, is on. And I'd ask Craig if he could unmute and maybe talk a little bit about how you guys are making do without this facility.
Yeah, sure. So for the things in there, what we've been doing is and I'm not sure we're supposed to, but we do send our graduate students in with carts. They'll take specimens and wheel them down to the laboratory proper for the plant ID, plant morph type courses. There's four to five botany labs in Bio 101, the Gen Ed, that serves about 1,200 kids a semester. And some of that happens in the, in the fall. We've moved some of that out to the quad because there's vegetation, but we lose all that in the spring when everything's dormant. So for the spring term, the experience is not so good. For some economic, the upper-level botany courses, we utilize some in the SLB greenhouse and then have to transfer those over to FSA in December, January, February. That's sometimes problematic. So we are hodgepodgeing it. I would say we can maintain maybe not quite half of the experience the greenhouse offered before with these other avenues, but that's the best we can do. It was really bad. And what prompted the shutdown is it's not ADA compliant, because it's a year older than me. And so when we did have some students in wheelchairs, it was really bad. So they'd get wheeled up to the door and the other students would go and get things and parade it. You know, so it took their situation and accentuated it and broke my heart and we just couldn't do that anymore. And then there's some exposed asbestos in there, so we just had, we didn't have a choice. We had to shut it down.
And it's a student recruitment issue too. I mean, when students, when we have families and prospective students on campus, and if they're interested in being a biology major, I mean, we kind of try to move them past this thing pretty fast. And we're competing with universities that have greenhouses. I mean, you know, our biggest competitor for biological sciences is going to be UIUC, and they have some beautiful academic facilities.
Within, we have a sequence in botany and conservation biology that is about 50 to 60 of our majors that anticipate anticipate dwindling or maybe that sequence will dry up without it.
No, yeah, Jan Bobdopski, as, as strong as our agricultural curriculum is and what we're known for and where we're located in the state, is it's very vital that, you know, in the fall, this comes up again and hopefully financially it can be put back on and get the resolution passed and to, to get it back up and running and that's all.
You know, this is Kathy Bone. I'm, I'm very much for having a greenhouse again. You know, I'm a biology and chemistry person, so I spent a lot of time in that greenhouse, but not, not in nineteen sixty-four. I just want to put that out there, but it is a very important part of the curriculum. I, I really feel that we do need to move forward. I just am concerned that at our May meeting may not be the correct time to move forward, but I would, I would very much be in favor if possible at the July or the October meeting, we, we see how things are standing with the state and, and the university. And hopefully at that point we can move forward. But I, I truly support the greenhouse. It's just, I don't think the timing is quite right in May of two twenty twenty.
Okay, I thank you all, everyone for the feedback. We don't have a motion for this right now on the floor, so we were just entertaining some general discussion regarding the subject matter, just to kind of get a feel for what is going on, but we're going to move on to the next motion. And if in the interim, before we have our next meeting, if there are some questions, concerns, comments you have, trustees, I'm sure you are able to submit those to Dr. Dietz and to his team and they can get us some more detailed information and perhaps we would feel more comfortable sometime soon revisiting this. So, Dr. Dietz, if you want to move on to the next resolution.
Very good. Thanks for the consideration and we will bring this back. Next resolution is resolution number twenty twenty dot O five slash sixteen, Milner Library Student Success Center. Since fixing the leaks in Milner Plaza, which is that deck out in front of the library, an installation of high density shelving in Milner Library approximately twenty-four thousand square feet is now available for new purposes. The twenty eighteen Milner Library Master Plan identified this space as a location for a student success center. The student success center would be a collaboration of departments across the university that are key in student retention efforts. Services in the center would include tutoring, advising and other student support services in partnership with university college. Expanded career advising services through a partnership with a career center and access to technology and technology support through a partnership with administrative technologies. To maintain the university's outstanding retention rates, improved programs and services are needed for students, particularly our underrepresented students which, who always have a bit of a gap in their retention rate vis a vis majority students. As we bring more underrepresented students on the campus, we certainly don't want that gap to grow. Our goal would be to close that gap some. And we think that this student success center would help with that. We believe we can, that we can increase our retention rates through the efforts that will be centered in the student success center. And I ask for your consideration of this resolution and not to exceed six point seven million dollars. And the source of the funding for this project is the Milner Library itself has over several years set aside four million dollars of the six point seven million dollars for the project. The balance would come from the general revenue funds and academic enhancement fees. And the same kind of logic applies to this as to the other in that it would take less time to potentially to complete because the architecture and design pieces is not like building a whole new facility. We've reclaimed the facility. We would need some help in, in some design with all of that, but it's not like, again, the, the building would happen tomorrow there. I would also mention that I think that obviously we have a renovated Bone Student Center. And I think a lot of people that lower part will be a part of the builder complex, I think not, not finishing this would look like that we're kind of close, but we're not done with the overall project for the bone and that lower level and even though it will be builder, I think they kind of physically tie that together. So similar comments about the last resolution, but I would ask for your consideration of this resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Dietz. Do we have a motion and a second for this resolution? Okay, seeing that we have none at this time, we will entertain some general discussion if that be the pleasure of the board before we move on to our final two resolutions.
This is Mary Ann.
Go ahead, Trustee Lauterback.
I just wanted to say that, you know, these are all great projects. The thing that we're still looking at is what are the priorities? What is this, you know, the life safety and where do we want to be? I mean, I think it would be all different if we didn't have this coronavirus and everything is so up in the air. I don't have any problem with any of the projects. It's just which one do we really, really need to do right now? And they all have, because everybody has the great, you know, they all have a great need. So I think the university needs to just sit down and say, okay, for life safety, for the number of students in this thing and the number of people that reacted, what do we really have to do? I mean, it's just a very general type of comment, but I thank you for the information.
Thank you, Trustee Lauterback. Trustee Aguilar.
Yes, just wanting to echo what my fellow trustees have said that these are, you know, really great projects and just having a hard time with the timing of everything, but I'm, you know, hopeful that we will be in a, you know, good situation and that fully the new student trustee, you know, can vote on this because these are great projects and I really see them enhancing our campus and our community and our retention for those of underrepresented students and you know, the family for the science students and they're just, I want to say they're great projects and I think, you know, the, our wonderful administration for their consideration in this, but again, just the timing of it. But I'm hopeful that in the future this will happen.
Thank you, Trustee Aguilar. Dr. Dietz, my question on this is just like we had a timeline for the greenhouse that we were told maybe about two years. What's the timeline that would be associated with the student success in?
I'm going to turn to Vice President Stevens on that one.
It will be because we've got a number of the infrastructure have already laid out there. It, in the interior part of the lower area, we've got, we would have to complete the designs. We've been studying the library for the past couple of years. But I suspect as Dr. Dietz says, that we're, most projects of this size are going to, going to be somewhere in the in the two to three year start to completion time, timeframe.
Thank you, Vice President Stevens. So I would like to echo what we have heard from Trustee Lauterback in that I know that there's a lot of work that goes into these resolutions and as a board, we definitely appreciate the amount of information that we receive from the administration regarding all of these resolutions. But just as everything is kind of being reconsidered and being brought back to the table, given this whole COVID nineteen situation, I know that this is, that, that there's teams that are working with the university to try to sort of reprioritize things and do some projections based on where we think we may fall in the fall, pun intended. And so I would ask that all of these resolutions, you know, as Mary Ann alluded to, everything on the table and just from a university perspective, say, given where we are, given what's going on or given the fact that, you know, we have ninety percent of our students instead of a hundred percent of our students or given the fact that we have to take on social distancing or whatever we have to do in the fall, that, that is considered when the resolutions come to us in the future. And then you maybe say, well, this resolution was, I don't know, not, not the priority initially, but it is now where this resolution was the priority, but now it's not or that kind of thing. So just keep that in mind for us, Dr. Dietz and for your team that it sounds like all of these are wonderful things and had this been a different environment, maybe have, would have received different support, but now our focus is different and, and we have some concern until we see how this whole COVID nineteen situation, what our university looks like in the future.
I appreciate that. I also would mention that we have a master planning process that really drives all of this. And so the priorities that, that come forward are based upon that master planning process. We have, you know, some expenses right now that we haven't had before in terms of, you know, related to the COVID nineteen. But what I'm hearing today is that you value the projects and we'll see how the fiscal year, next fiscal year pans out, we'll see how enrollment pans out and we'll, we'll bring this back hopefully in the fall.
Thank you, Dr. Dietz. And I just want to point out that for those of us who attended trustee retreat from the last year, one of the things we talked about was interrupters. And I think if nothing else, boy, this COVID nineteen certainly is an interrupter. It definitely goes into that category. And one of the things that shows what your university is made of is how nimble we can be in the face of those sorts of interrupters. So I think that the university has done a magnificent job maintaining for motion through all of this. And now we're on to a next phase. As Dr. Dietz said, we were just trying to make it through the spring, make it through commencement, then make it through the summer. And now we're thinking about what's going to happen in our upcoming year. So we thank you again. I can't say enough how much we are impressed by your leadership and value it, Dr. Dietz, during this time and your team for making us be able to keep all of this afloat and keep moving forward. So.
Thank you very much. Chair Jones, the next two resolutions are yours, so I will turn it back to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Dietz. Resolution number twenty twenty point five slash seventeen, recognition of student trustee Sarah Aguilar. Thank you, Dr. President Dietz. Trustee Aguilar, before I ask for approval of this resolution, I just want to say on behalf of the entire board, it has been a pleasure working with you these past two years. You have earned the respect and admiration of your peers, your student peers, your board colleagues and entire university community. And I will echo what Dr. Dietz has said. We have had, you have been one of the most involved student trustees that we have ever had and we really appreciate that. I know the people that you serve with have appreciated your input and advice. And I know the university has benefited from your participation in all aspects of university government. The, the service of a student trustee is not always exciting. I know that we're a pretty lively group, but everything you do is now exciting, but it is always important. And I want you to know how much we appreciate the excellent work you've done on behalf of the university and constantly pushing yourself and going above and beyond. Sarah, we will send you the frame resolution which reflects our appreciation for your service, but I would like to read the resolution. Whereas Sarah Aguilar was selected by her constituents at Illinois State University to represent their interests as a member of the Board of Trustees of Illinois State University and where Sarah Aguilar ably discharged that responsibility while at the same time keeping in mind the interest of all the people of the state. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois State University expresses its sincere appreciation to Sarah Aguilar for her service on the board and its hope for her, and its hope for her success in all future endeavors. Do I have a motion and a second for this resolution?
Lauterback moves.
Navarro second.
We have a motion from Trustee Lauterback and a second from Trustee Navarro. Do we have any discussion before we proceed to vote? Trustee Donahue.
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank Sarah for, for also all she's done and wish her well. Sorry, I give you a hug, so I'm going to give you a virtual hug, Sarah. So, so thank you for, for, for all you've done and, and I also want to thank Jan Murphy and Sherry Zach. I apologize. I, when that came up, I, I was either not paying attention, but thank you also for, for, for your service to the university. But thank you so much, Sarah, and good luck in Florida State.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Donahue. I'm going to go to Trustee Ross Mark and Sarah, I know you have comments for us. We'll take your comments after we vote on the motion.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to go on the record of echoing Rocky Donahue's comments, not only for Sarah, but for Sherry as well as for Jan. But Sarah, thank you so much for everything that you've offered and sending much love to you as you move on to bigger and better things in life. Keep in touch and let us know how we can continue to support you. But thanks for everything that you've done the last two years. You've been awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Ross Mark. Trustee Lauterback.
And I'm not sure what else, what more to say to Sarah except that good luck and at least it'll be a lot warmer at this time next year. And hopefully when we get down there, we'll, we'll all be able to see you. Jan, I don't know what I'm going to do to bowling. I guess we'll have to be at the girls' basketball team to go bowling next year with Scott. And, you know, Sherry, enjoy. Retirement's not too bad.
Any other comments from I C. Trustee Bone?
Sarah, I just wanted to thank you, you know, as a new member of the Board of Trustees, I had some tech issues at times and I appreciate all your help and all the meetings and all of your support. And we are truly going to miss you, but good luck in the future. And to Jan and Sherry, we're going to miss both of you also. So thank you for everything you've done for ISU.
Any further comments, trustees? I would echo everything that's been said. Sarah is very special to me. She knows, so I don't have to say that here because she already knows. Jan, we're really, really going to miss you and your expertise and, you know, just you are the subject matter expert on so many things at the university. And so we're going to miss you, but we hope we still see you around. And Sherry, it was my pleasure to do my trustee in residence at the library, my most recent one. It was so eye opening and so much information. So I appreciate you and all of your enthusiasm that translates down to your team there at the library. The library can't be replaced by, no matter how much Wikipedia we think we can do and how much Googling we think we can do, we still need the library. So I appreciate your service there as well. If there's no further comments, we have a motion by Trustee Lauterback and a second by Trustee Navarro. All those in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Resolution carried. I will turn it over to you, Trustee Aguilar, for your comments.
Thank you, Chair Jones. I really just want to say thank you to each and every one of you from the bottom of my heart. I'm going to try not to cry. It's a very emotional day for me. I just have so much love for this university and it has truly been an honor to learn from each and every one of you in a different way and grow and be a student leader here and represent my constituents. And I have nothing but positive and wonderful memories here and a huge thank you to each and every one of you. Also, I have my, my mom, grandma and my aunt Lisa, they're all watching as well as my boyfriend Peyton and many others. And I just want to say a huge hello and thank you to my family and my loved ones for your support throughout these years here at ISU because I really couldn't do it without my support system. A huge shout out to LJ. I love you very much and you already know that, but you've been my father figure here and you've really helped me throughout this role and just to be who I am today and hopefully a great vice president of student affairs one day. And a huge shout out to President Dietz. Thank you as well. It's been such an honor to work alongside you and really just build a bond that will last a lifetime. So thank you. To Provost Murphy, I adore you so much. I remember on my very first meeting ever as the student trustee, I was nervous as heck and Provost Murphy left a wonderful note that I still have and I cherish that very much. And I wish you the best in retirement and thank you for everything. Thank you, Sherry, as well for your years of service and enjoy retirement as well. And I just have nothing but love for all of you. So I'm sending big hugs and it's been an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Trustee Aguilar. You are really ve- very much going to be missed. I suspect when we are all able to get moving, some of us may show up on your doorstep in Florida, so you better welcome us with open arms.
Where do you know? My ISU mom.
All right, we are moving on to resolution twenty dot. All right, we are moving on to resolution twenty dot, I mean twenty twenty dot five slash eighteen. The extension of the president's contract. The Board of Trustees entered into a, its current contract for services with President Dietz on September thirtieth, twenty seventeen. With the term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty. The board desires that Dr. Dietz continue as president of Illinois State University. And President Dietz desires to continue to serve as president. That's always good when there's a meeting of the mind, so we both agree in that, in that manner. Both the president and Dr. Dietz intend to enter into a new contract, intended to enter into a new contract for services. Prior to the end of the current calendar year. In anticipation of entering into a new contract for service. The board and President Dietz would like to amend the current contract to extend the term to December thirty first, twenty twenty. And to bring the severance payment provisions into compliance with the Illinois Government Severance Pay Act five ILCS four fifteen. I, I do want to add here and, and this resolution and in these comments that. As we have said throughout this meeting and throughout Dr. Dietz's term here as president. We are very grateful and thankful for his service. He has done a magnificent job with the university, moving us forward in a positive manner. And we are in full support of Dr. Dietz continuing as president. But just as everything has sort of been thrown forward loop. It was our intention to have this wrapped up prior to the contract expiration. But COVID nineteen had other plans for our lives. And so COVID nineteen has managed to take precedent over everything else and throw all of our, our best laid plans. Into sort of a tailspin. And so that being said, we do have every intention to wrap this up by the end of the year. But we do need to make sure that we still have an active contract beyond June thirtieth. Is there a motion and a second to approve this resolution to extend President, President Dietz's contract through December thirty first, twenty twenty? Moves. Motion by trustee Bone and a second by trustee Lauterback. Do we have any discussion? Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't looking for hands because I was taking notes. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion by trustee Bone and a second by trustee Lauterback. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? There's, there's all, there's no, none in opposed, so the motion carried. Thank you. President Dietz, on behalf of my fellow trustees, I want to thank you for your continued fine leadership at Illinois State University. And your willingness to continue to serve as its president. I know, you know, retirement might be getting contagious. I see a lot of people retiring around you, but I'm glad you have not caught the retirement bug just yet. So thank you. And do we have any comments that you would like to make, Dr. Dietz?
Yes, just briefly, thank you so much for the vote of confidence and, and, in me. But it's really in the entire team, including all the executive leadership of the university, the deans, directors, department heads, faculty, staff, students. And, and my wife, who whenever I take on these things, she takes them on too. And so I appreciate very much your vote of confidence and we'll do our darnedest to continue to move the institution ahead. Regardless of this pandemic. And so the, the past has been a terrific honor for me to serve in this role. And I look forward to continuing to serve throughout the, the term of this extension. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Dietz. Do we have any comments from any of the trustees?
I'm just glad to get this part done and thank you for all the work that you've done this spring and your team, I know. But it takes a great leader to make a team work. So I'm looking forward to the next three years, once we get through this.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Lauterback.
And I'd like to echo Mary Ann's comments. I totally agree and I appreciate your understanding and support to continue on, Dr. Dietz.
Thank you trustee Ross Mark, trustee Aguilar.
Yep, just want to echo, I know I've said it, but you're the greatest president and we are so fortunate to have you. And thank you for your leadership. The students truly appreciate you and I know the students can't wait to see you back on the quad and you always say to us. And it makes our, the days and it's just awesome how visible and present you are and accessible to all students. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm the only president that you've known though, is that right, Sarah?
Yeah, but still.
I appreciate that. Thank you, very kind of you.
Thank you trustee Aguilar, trustee, any, any other comments from trustees? I thought I saw trustee Bone and then I thought I saw trustee Navarro, but they may be saying that we have already spoken well and they echo our, our comments.
I just, just echo Mary Ann and Sharon and, and Sarah. We're very, very happy that you're continuing on, Dr. Dietz.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and the same thing here from, from trustee Dobski and Ed Larry. Glad to hear you're keeping good health and stay safe and have you around for another three years.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so this completes our business for today. I would like to now ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Well, I, I had a question, I'm sorry, Julia. For athletics, I opened a mail yesterday and got the renewal for the football tickets this year. And maybe if Larry Lyons is still on here, are we going to have college football this coming fall?
Well, good morning, everyone. We're certainly hoping that we're going to have college football this fall. There's conversations taking place at the, the conference level, at the national level. About organizing that and moving forward. Obviously we'll be in tune with all of the Restore Illinois safeguards that are going to be in place. And then of course what the campus wants us to do. But our goal is to, to move forward in that direction and, and hopefully we, we can enjoy some football.
Good, okay, thank you.
End up membership right back in, Bob.
All right, no problem. If I, if I get the doors open here that I could pay for it, yeah, so, yeah.
Trustee Aguilar, I saw your hand.
Yeah, before we end the meeting, can I do a picture just to remember my last meeting?
Sure.
Nobody, no, no one logged off. Let, I see everyone posing. Let's, let's close out the meeting first and then everyone just hold fast for a minute for the picture. A motion by trustee Lauterback to adjourn the meeting and a second by trustee Bone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That concludes our meeting. Thank you, we are adjourned. Please hang on for trust, for trustee Aguilar's picture. Looks like she already got it.
Okay, one, two, three. Got it, thank you.